Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Welcome back to winter.
Yeah, welcome winter again. Alrighty, day thirty. Get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second either way.
First by Carl, second by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Through the minutes from March sixth.
Make a motion.
I have, we have a, I have a justice on this here. She didn't put our, our, uh, box, when we were all up in the box culverts on the twenty eighth.
That's because it's a regular meeting, it's not a special meeting.
Okay, then what about the one on the second, is that the thing?
Yeah, I think it was.
Okay, then she did the agenda.
Right.
Perfect.
Yep, then I'd say with that discussion, I'd make a motion to approve the motion.
Prove, okay. First by Eric, second by...
I'll do it.
Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public, thank you, gentlemen on the agenda. Seeing nothing from the general public, we'll move on to public hearing. The Humboldt County budget for fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
I move we open the public hearing for the budget fiscal seventeen eighteen.
Motion to open, open the public hearing, I get a second.
Second by...
Second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the public hearing is now open.
I have some extra copies of the resolution from the press, but it looks like somewhere people may have the answer.
Is this the five or something?
No, that wasn't, this is the actual budget, that we want to do because of the...
I agree.
Okay, the page you're getting has the actual adoption of budget on the one side, on the backside is the notice of public hearing that was published in the newspaper. Um, the notice of public hearing gives you all the details as far as your taxes, um, all your other revenues, intergovernmental licenses and permits, et cetera, et cetera. Goes through the expenses and gives you percentage of how much it went up from last year to this year. So, um, there are some that went up, some that went down quite a bit. Capital projects is a large one and debt service that went down because we were paying a lot more last year when we were actually constructing the LEC um, than we're expecting to next year, now that it's all done. Now we know what our payments are, um, we weren't sure what things were gonna be when we were in construction phase, um, so everything should be in pretty good shape. Um, mental health went up by about sixteen percent, it's just, uh, the asking from the region is different than it was last year. So, uh, let, our current year was seven hundred and ninety, next year they want to be twenty nine, so that's what we scheduled into the budget. Public health up slightly, and fiscal health, which is, uh, public health nurses, DHS, um, those types of things are eleven percent, so not a lot of huge, by the time you take the minuses out, it negates all of the pluses that were there. So at the bottom, our total ending fund balance, we're projecting, uh, six million four hundred and twenty-four, seven seventy for next year. Reestimate of this year of about seven million, and actual last year was seven million five. Again, as I've told you in the past, in a perfect world, all the revenues come in and all the expenses get spent, this is where we're gonna end up at. It doesn't work that way, sometimes all your revenues don't come in, sometimes not all the money gets spent out of the budget. Um, if the revenues don't come in, that's gonna decrease your ending fund balance. If the expenses don't get spent, that's gonna increase your ending fund balance. Normally, we've been very fortunate, knock on wood, that usually our ending fund balance increases because not everything gets spent that we projected. Um, as far as the countywide levies, we've got down at the bottom our proposed property taxation by type, um, what the countywide levy would be, what the, just the rural only would be, and our utility replacement tax. Um, the urban areas, we have a levy rate of five point nine six three seven, the rural of nine point nine one three seven. And then on the actual adoption of budget, the certification of taxes. We had a nice increased valuation this year over what we had last year. A lot of that had to do with, um, rural properties and increased, um, commercial. So, in general basic, our rate would be three eighty, and that is the same as what it was last year. General supplemental, one fifty-eight, and that's what it was last year. Mental health, um, for seventeen eighteen, we're projecting point four nine eight seven seven seven. Last year was point five three nine six four, so that's down slightly. Three point five five for rural services, and debt services is up from point oh two nine five five last year to point oh eight four nine two one. So the overall totals are up point oh one four five oh eight, so roughly one cent. Overall total and increasing levy rates from last year. That doesn't mean taxes will not go up, it means the county portion should go up slightly, but there's a lot of other factors that enter into that, you've got your schools, you've got your hospitals, you've got that ag extension to the center, you've got all these other entities, the cities, um, entering into that, so it depends on how their tax rates come in as to how you're gonna end up. So, um, we've listed on our, our, uh, adoption of budget, you have to list in there what your debt service is, and that's on line nine. Uh, the fifty-nine eight eight seven is our replacement, um, in property tax dollars that will come in. We're projecting our payments to be, um, I think it was around that same amount. Trying to think if there's any other abnormalities or anything different here. You always have to list your emergency management dollars, so on line seven, we're paying a hundred and fifteen thousand from general basic into emergency management, because emergency management, besides if, uh, emergency manager grants and gifts, really doesn't have a lot of funding come through it to finance it. So after the budget is put together for emergency management, then we have an idea of how much money, uh, we need to put in from the county to supplement it, and so that's what that's gonna be. Um, at the bottom, we listed all the salaries for, uh, the elected officials proposed for seventeen eighteen. Um, these agree with what the compensation board, um, had recommended to us earlier. And then there's a separate resolution for you, this is, this was required last year for the first time, and it's required again this year, called Resolution two thousand seventeen dash five, and there's some in the press on that one too. Um, it just lists all the salaries, the proposed increase, what the recommended salary is going to be, and then if it stays the same, you don't make any adjustments at the bottom, but if you change it, then I need to write that at the bottom, and I have to report all the i's and m's as far as the adoption of that vote. So, uh, I guess I'm ready for any questions, if there are any, on anything within that budget. I, uh, will have copies if anybody wants to see the complete detailed papers, I can wear them, so I don't have them right now, but I should attend.
Well Peggy, you've done a lot of work on this, I appreciate you putting the numbers together.
Well, thank you, you guys were very easy to work with this year, and it went together fairly easy once we knew we had an increase in valuation. At some point, that is gonna be an issue, and each year it gets a little bit scarier because it gets closer and closer, and I know I've warned you every time to say, you know, the time is gonna come, and maybe it'll be after I retire and down the road, who knows?
Yeah, don't even talk like that.
Well, somebody new dealing with it, huh?
Maybe we'll all be gone too.
Maybe you will be.
I move we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, we gotta ask for any concerns for this.
Any concerns from the general public? Seeing no concerns, now we can...
Now, you wanna make the motion again, or?
I'll move we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Yeah, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we have to adopt the Resolution, um, two thousand seventeen dash five first, before you adopt the official budget.
I'll make the motion to adopt the Resolution two thousand seventeen dash five.
And are you adopting it as is, with no changes?
As is, yeah.
I'll second that motion as is.
I got a first and a second. I know we had a lot of conversation down at ISAC about compensation boards this last time. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then we have the actual budget resolution itself, two thousand seventeen dash six. I apologize to those copies that I gave out, you copy machine cut off the top of it, but that's exactly what it said.
I move we approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash six, as through the adoption of budget for seventeen eighteen.
Okay, I have a first.
I'll second.
And a second by Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Those numbers get much smaller? I'm gonna go back to the eye doctor and...
And this is a state form, if I, if it was a, a, a form on our computer from Solutions, I could enlarge it, but with the state ones...
Yeah, I'm gonna go back, find the, find mine on my bicycle.
I struggle with it, Bruce, it's the same thing, it's like, alright, what is happening with that?
Those are smaller.
Let me talk about that compensation board, there's all kind of discussion down in the white on that. I think it works pretty good the way we have it. Some people wanna change it to be township commissioner, some want to do it.
Because there's the same people that wanna change the county lines.
Right, you wanna be, jump out of your county and join the next county.
I wonder if anybody has asked the townships that they wanna do it.
I bet you they don't.
We tried to get Whip to kinda give us back to what she was doing.
They made me an offer, they did make me an offer on that. I didn't know if we should bring it up to a public hearing, we weren't here.
They got more political, Paul, just look at the calendar, like nineteen, whatever, we weren't even here. They've opened this sort of existence.
Alrighty, well, we're a little early.
We can do the claims?
Yeah, we can do claims.
I can find it, right? Looked at the claims and I had, uh, one hundred and sixty-seven oh five six point three one, and twenty-two four four two dash ninety for drainage, I'd make a motion for that.
Yeah, first.
I second that.
A second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You can do the transfers also, you don't have to be in drainage to...
Let's, uh, approve three transfers for drainage.
Um, Trish provided me with three transfers that she would like to do, um, from drainage fund five one five five nine to five, they're all to five one oh oh two, and then five one two four three, and five one five five five. First one's for a hundred and ninety-two thousand nine oh six forty-nine, the second one is for one million three twenty-seven nine thirty-seven ninety, and the third one is for twenty-one thousand four sixty seventeen, we did check with the director, um, to make sure those amounts are in those funds.
That last one was a lot nicer.
Yeah, it's the smaller one, isn't it?
Okay.
Anytime do you hear we have to do that thing?
For drainage, no, very often. We do a lot of transfers from the county, like rural services to secondary roads and those types of, you know, community betterment to different funds, but not too often with drainage.
And these funds are, well, which part are they, I guess?
That we would need to call Trish here, I don't know.
Do you want me to, have her come in?
Yeah, I like that one.
Trish, yeah. We just have a question on these transfers. Oh. Why don't you make the copy, this is not on good this morning. You remember the project there?
Oh. Oh, that's for DD two, um, and lateral I. And it was, there was different amounts of bills and different ones at the time, so now we're just kinda fixing the... There was more collected in DD two, and then we're putting it into I.
Okay, I'll get it out. Alright, go on, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we need a motion on that?
Yes.
I made a motion to, for the transfers that Peggy... Give the numbers.
And a first. A second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Do you wanna do a few committee reports? Okay, I'll just sit out in the hallway, okay? Just do a few committee reports.
Um, just clearing. Tuesday the seventh, we were all upstairs for the conference board at six o'clock. And Wednesday, Thursday, Crady went to the ISAC meeting in Des Moines. How big a presentation do you have, Carl?
Nothing, I'm just saying, I, I echo what you said.
For the most part, I think they were, uh, very good, I guess I was a little disappointed that our, the people who went down for the legislation day at the Capitol, um, all we got to listen to is the governor, everybody else was busy in there.
Despite Jana's best efforts.
Yeah, she tried to get them out there, but we were all sitting in a group waiting to meet with them, and they never come to visit, so I guess all I would say is hopefully we'll be able to catch them when they come through town for their town hall meetings. But all in all, I think that, uh, most of the meetings that I went to, um, were good, there was one or two that I had a little difficulty. But other than that, it was, well, very well received by most of the people, and I think, I don't know, were the numbers down, Carl?
Yeah, they were down a little bit this year, we don't know why. Something like forty-five new supervisors didn't stay a while.
Yeah, I think it should have been up a little bit.
But we don't know why it was down, I think it was a hundred and ninety, a hundred and forty or something like that, I don't really know what it was.
I guess the one that I would, that kinda caught my eye was the, the, uh, the lady that did the wellness. And I know this isn't probably gonna be a real hit with everybody, but the...
Did you take it personally, Bruce, or what?
Well, I, you know, when, when I talked to Rick Rasmussen, um, he said that their insurance has improved dramatically by talking with her and seeing if we can't get a program going, and I guess I'm all for, uh, improving our, our, uh, insurance costs, I don't know what it, I don't think we're gonna be out here running laps around the parking lot, but I think if we can reduce something, um, we owe it to the, each other, but... And she said all we had to do is get ahold of her, so...
Eric showing that one county where they had a drop in the rates by ten thousand dollars.
That's huge.
When the insurance rates are typically going up, theirs went down.
So, I guess I would...
Be something to look into, like you said.
Do you have her name and number for the self contractor?
Hmm?
Do you have her name and number of contractor?
Okay, I guess the address for the, it's on the website here.
What, what was it called, something?
Live Iowa. Live Healthy Iowa.
Healthy Iowa, Live Healthy Iowa.
And, I guess as long as I'm killing the five minutes, um, I think the, the trafficking one almost made me sick in my stomach. To think that, you know, those, I don't know what age those girls were, but, I mean, they said that if you live in a town that borders the interstate, um, thirty-five or eighty, and you see something that's going on that's suspicious, call. Uh, I mean, it's just scary to think that, and it's not only boys, but twelve to fourteen-year-old girls and boys that are taken, and it just made me sick in my stomach, but I think that happens, but... I thought you had anything, Carl, or Eric?
I thought I was at the same meeting you did, the only extra meeting I had, I had a meeting night before with the supervisor's executive board, and we planned all this, this meeting, we wanted to make sure they were there. The one I particularly enjoyed was, uh, the old meeting's law, I, I thought we had enough of that, every time you go to a meeting, you learn something new. But I think it's important we keep that in mind as we, as we look around. Human traffic, it was good, uh, the jailer from, and the sheriff from Marshall County leave a program on how you keep from abusing inmates, which is a concern. We had a big discussion of eighteen four-wheelers, three-wheelers, which I think were in pretty good shape in the county. Other than that, I thought it was pretty good, I was also disappointed with Wednesday's meeting, that's probably the worst meeting we've ever had, we couldn't get in. I think they were all too busy this year.
They're, they're in session now, and they're either in caucus or in...
And years before, the governor came over to our meetings, spoke to us, we could hear him, this year we sat out in the recovery, we couldn't hear anything. Wednesday's kinda wasted time, we made up for it the other two days, I thought.
The other, the other meeting I got the pleasure of getting it exposed to is, someone gave my cell phone number out, so I got to go to a meeting. We won't say who, but, um, it's on the secondary roads and the, the, the funds, uh, dispersed for negative, uh, large county, a medium county, and a small county, and the guy on the small county got, is off, so Carl gave my number out, and this, Adam Schnell, who i- is a DOT planner, um, he lives in Humboldt, and he trans, uh, drives back and forth to work in, in, uh, Ames every day. So, he goes to our church, Jana, it's, um, Brian Spelmeier's son-in-law, and when I walked in, I looked at him like, I should know you. He was ushering at our church on Sunday, and he looked at me like, Bruce? But anyway, um, he was the one that did the, uh, presentation for the DOT, so, um, I got to, Eric and I were talking to him out in the hall and, and got to visiting with him and said, you know, you know, there's a lot of times that we don't really know what to do, sometimes what the DOT is thinking, and, and, uh, I said, so if, if we have the ability to grab you and twist your arm sometime, uh, if you'd like to do a presentation to help us get up speed, or, and he says, as long as he didn't step on a, you know, he didn't wanna influence or make anything that would make Paul upset, I said, well, I don't think anybody's gonna be upset, but I says, as long as you're in the area, we might as well, so we might end up sometime trying to have him...
Bruce, I gave him your number, the small county, they wanted, they wanted a small guy, and I thought we had a good plan, so...
Well, you got me hooked, my one, he said, uh, oh, they serve you breakfast, so I go down there and they didn't even have a cup of coffee.
They did.
So here, I'm thinking I'm gonna get at least breakfast, uh...
You'd be able to fit a small guy in a small county.
There you go. But it was interesting, that was probably one of the best, just listening to...
Alrighty, well, we're gonna go back to the agenda.
Oh, you're alright.
And have, um, Tom Huntermark, discussion on the ag drainage well closure. Tom, do you wanna come up and sit? We can hear you better up here.
Okay.
Only one chair wired, you figure out which one.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Another guy here with me here too.
They did not order this well this morning.
My god.
There you go.
Morning.
Thank you, how are you?
Did you hear me say that again, Tom?
Hey, I got this. I got this, I did, did he give you the one with the Iowa map on it?
Yeah, he didn't give me that one.
She said, give her a call and she'd take care of the rest, so...
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Well, I guess I, uh, have a piece of property that's got an ag drainage well on it, and, uh, we've done some, uh, meeting here with some people here that I have, and then, uh, I joined this property with Don Faltzen, and, uh, he was unable to make it here this morning, he was planning on it, but he's unable to make it. And, uh, Don went ahead and contacted, uh, Bill here to, uh, get some ideas on this ag drainage well, and, uh, of course, I had some ideas here too, and then, uh, had this meeting here in the county with Mike Borland, which Mike is in the back row here too, today. And, uh, we're looking at eliminating this well here, and I think we're looking at running a tile there, guys, it's in Delena section thirty-one down there. And, uh, we're looking at running a tile here to close this, I guess. Uh, we've done some preliminary surveying out there, I guess you'd say too, and, uh, I think it's feasible to run this thing south here to the little spur of the dredge ditch down here, and, uh, it's gonna be going between, uh, my property and Don Faltzen's property.
Could I ask just real quick, Bill, what is your last name for the...
Manske.
Manske?
M A N S K E.
Okay, and you're with the Precision Drives?
Yes, yes.
That appears to be the most direct route to get water out.
Um, yeah. It will be, yes, mhm. Uh, we look, we did some preliminary surveying there, and the dig is really easy, I think, and, uh, there was a way that we could go east, but the dig was gonna be, uh, super deep.
Much deeper.
Going through a hill.
The proposed main that Mike Borland's got on inventory there, the estimated cost for this was four hundred and ten thousand. So if you go back to my last sheet, I added myself a cost that would be incurred in this project, and we're looking at ninety-eight thousand to close the well. And that includes everything, and, um, I assured Don and Tom that that cost would not exceed that, that number. And I think we'll come in even less. Now, I know Rick Hopper's here, and I've done a lot with Rick, so I'm a little nervous, you know, because I did call Don Etler, and I asked him if we could do this privately, and I, I, we've got Don involved, and Rick does a tremendous job, so I want that out here right now, because I'm good friends with him, and we've done a lot of business together, and, um, so Rick, don't take anything at heart here.
No, no, I'm here for several other things too.
Okay, so, anyway, Don Etler is gonna be involved in the project to do all the design. I, I'm confident that the eighteen inch will exceed the half-inch drainage coefficient, and the acres involved, and if you go back to the map again, you can see I've kinda depicted a watershed line of the acres that would drain into this main, and what Tom and I kinda thought is, and Don, is to run the main directly up the fence line, that way it doesn't really affect any other tile negatively that are in the watershed until we get beyond that point up into Tom's property.
Guys, now the red dot is the ag drainage well, the top of the paper there, and then that baby blue, yeah, yep. And then that baby blue line is the proposed tile line there.
The reason I've got all the other tile there, 'cause typically, that, we've done all that tile work on Don's property, so to get a good schematic of what we were proposing to do, I thought it was best to just include everything so everybody can see what was done. And if you go to the east of that, that eighteen inch line, you can see all the tile that Tom's done, so this tile up the fence line, well, we won't have to cut through a million tile and all that, and we can kinda reduce the watershed acres there, because this is already done on the lower end, it's the upper end that we need the, the outlet for. So I did a feasibility, and the, the only issue that we have is that open ditch has silted in at the end, pretty bad. And what I'm proposing here today, and Mike Borland and I, uh, discussed this with Don Etler, we would like to do a partial cleanout while I'm there, uh, to get the ditch lowered to where we're gonna start the new outlet. There is about a foot of silt in the end of the ditch for about four to five hundred feet, but I kind of, uh, proposed to go down, and it'll be kinda dependent on what Don Etler tells me after their crew does their survey, but I assumed about a twelve-foot ditch, twelve-hundred-foot ditch, partial cleanout. It's just dipping the bottom out, it's not sloping up the sides or anything like that. We'd be able to throw all of our spoils to the north side of the ditch where there's, there's no buffer, so we don't have to worry about that. And, uh, that'll give us additional, um, elevation to work with, so we can make this project work really well for the landowners. So, that portion of the project would have to be run through the district, you know, for a cleanout, it's a repair, yes. Otherwise, the rest of the costs that I have in here, for estimation, are all, you know, based off the closing of the well. Have nothing to do with the ditch though. So Don thought, you know, for, for the drainage district, it would be, you know, for them to pay for that through the district would be more applicable for this type of project. So basically, we're kind of asking for your blessing on the whole project and for the ditch cleanout today.
Can we get state reimbursement for digging out the ditch too?
If it's needed to close that drainage well, yes.
Okay. Good news.
Okay.
Okay, I got one question.
Sure.
Uh, you mentioned Don thought it would meet the half-inch coefficient. I would recommend you don't proceed until you have that.
Well, we're...
Because if it doesn't meet it, then you get no funding.
That's part of, part of what I require is a, an engineer, design and sign off on it.
Okay.
That's part of what I'm requiring is an engineer, design, and sign off on it. If there's gonna be state funds involved.
Yes.
And then we also need to have a statement that there's no impacted farmland wetlands. And so, all of that is included in Don Etler. And what they're proposing, instead of making it drainage district project, it would just be done privately. And we can do that, and all the money has to be essentially paid upfront.
And it'll be reimbursed later?
Invoices. But the ditch cleanout is more... I don't think it's a whole district, but whoever drains to that spur will be impacted by that.
The acres that I've got in the watershed, fifteen's gonna be real close to half. But Mike said if that fifteen doesn't reach it, then they'll go to eighteen, which would be overdesigned on the half. So, I know the eighteen's gonna be plenty big enough to exceed half inch.
And Don Etler's group over there, they will verify that. It may not be an official engineering report, but more like a letter report.
Yeah.
So, it'll be a little... Just up privately, it doesn't have to meet some of the criteria that drainage district report would have to meet. But it still has to meet the requirements for the state and for by...
How deep is that, Bill?
We just honestly, I didn't do an every hundred-foot elevation. We just took the highest spot. We're about twelve foot. And then we shot the lowest tile, and there was two tiles that come into the well. We shot the lowest tile, and we should be able to come in there about six tenths deeper than those flow line to flow line. And if we can deepen the ditch, we can start just a scotch deeper, and we can even come in there deeper. But right now, I've got us coming into that real low spot at five foot, and the lowest tile in the low spot is three and a half. But we're not sure if the tile don't come out of the well with a lot of fault, 'cause sometimes they dive them down, you know, right at the very end.
At the very end, yeah.
Yeah, at the very end. So, we're not sure of that. But I certainly have the depth because of the preliminary to get all the way there. But the deepest cut's gonna be about twelve foot.
The adequate size, in case you wanna dump some other tile into that someday?
Yes.
It will handle.
Yep, absolutely.
And Don Etler will verify that. Determine whether...
I'm very confident that'll work.
And you said you've done this other...
Yeah, I did all the tile work there for Don in nineteen... Oh, excuse me, two thousand and nine. We did all that tile work.
So, you're familiar with all the...
Yep. I know where everything is. And the reason we didn't tile the northeast quarter of that eighty is because that eight-inch coming out of there is in poor condition, which really makes a nice project for Don, because then he can get a new outlet up there in that corner. And Tom and Don have gotten along really well, and they've already agreed on a percentage of what they're gonna share the cost at. And they understand how the money's gotta be accrued and everything. So, they're getting along really well, and I think it makes it for a nice, simple, private project to do.
I got one question for Rick Hopper. The ditch has about a foot of silt in it. Typically, when do we clean a ditch?
The way he's describing it, without any thing planted up next to it, you could do it anytime.
But I mean, as for the depth of the silt?
Oh. We've cleaned them when there's just a foot.
Maybe. That was the answer I was looking for.
Yeah, we have.
And I'm just kinda throwing a number at this guy, 'cause I took water elevations. And as you go to the end of the ditch, you can... The water's really moving fast right there at the end. So, you can see that there's quite a bit of silt. But I just took water line shots, and five hundred feet back, I could pick up almost a foot. So, I'm assuming there's about a foot at the very end of the outlet.
That's how you derived it, twelve hundred feet approximately?
Well, honestly, I just went back twelve hundred feet as a proposed to clean out till I get Don Etler's blessing on what he feels we should do. It was just kind of a guesstimate.
Well, obviously.
Yeah. But twelve hundred feet would definitely put us in great shape. Really good shape. I think we'd pick up probably a foot and a half, be able to keep the tile a little higher from where we're gonna start, which would be nice, 'cause right now, I don't have a water line to where the ditch is today, and I really wouldn't wanna do that.
So, the twelve hundred feet cleanout, then from there on, is... It looks good at this point?
Yeah.
And Don will check that with Don?
Yep.
'Cause that was cleaned about eighteen, eighteen, twenty years ago or so?
Yeah, that's another question. It's a good answer.
It was cleaned then?
You know, Don Etler, he's just met. But if you guys are okay and approve this moving forward, and Don will have his survey crew out there, double-check everything, and issue a letter report. And he'll be working directly with the landowners. So, the report will be addressed to them, but we can make sure you guys get copies. I'll want a copy.
Bill, you mentioned you could clean out whatever amount of the ditch you...
I'm pretty sure that I can. The ditch gets really deep, and I do have a three thirty-six cat excavator. It's not a long reach. So, if there is an issue there, we might have to have somebody else come and do that if I can't quite get to the bottom. I honestly, I haven't looked at it close enough. I know I can get the upper end for several hundred feet, but the ditch gets quite deep as you go back to the east. And honestly, I can't answer that.
We do have people that can do it, of course.
Yeah.
So, does this take one of our numbers off here, off our list?
Yes, it does. Yes.
Well, I think it's a number break.
Well, it's a good way to handle this.
Yeah. Yeah, Tom, thank you for, you know, Don and Bill for working through it.
Well, I did it. I'll be honest with you. They're both customers of mine, but I was here for Don. Don is very ill, and he's totally dependent on me, you know, like big time. And Tom and him are getting along great on this project. It just is a nice, smooth project, and Don's totally trustworthy of me, you know, to make sure it gets done right for his family, future generation. 'Cause honestly, Don is not doing very well in life right now physically-wise. So, I'm here to represent him more than Tom, but I'm here to represent Tom. They're good clients of mine, and I'm extremely busy in my life in drainage. I don't even need this job, but I wanna do it to help these two people out.
I had that with Don Falterson here a couple of weeks ago, and his concern has been addressed. He was afraid they were gonna cut across his property and cut a lot of lines. This was a very good way to work this out, going down that property line.
There won't be any more land that would be annexed in because of this being now...
You just have to look at that lateral.
As far as I can see, everything's already within the drainage system. And we will also require the landowners, anyone who's impacted, to have an agreement between them of who's paying for what and future maintenance. So, that will be in, you know, tied to the land and then recorded. So, whoever purchases the land will be bound to whatever...
The agreement was. Okay, sounds like...
So, I'll be, you know... So, I have to make sure all my eyes are dotted and teased across before I can cost share. Those are, you know, that were taken care of wetlands that is properly designed and constructed, and that the landowners have agreed to what's proposed.
If you go to my map, there's one more comment I've got to make. I've got the watershed line that I feel is kinda depicted off contour. That's the water that would really drain into this main. Tom's already pattern-tiled this side, so we probably don't need any additional outlet capacity except for in that corner. And then all the land to the north, right at the property line, really drains back to the north. So, that should cover the, you know, be really close to the watershed that will stay in comfort into this tile. That's why I felt the eighteen-inch tile was more than adequate for half inch. One more comment. I appreciate everybody's cooperation here, you know, and I'm just honestly trying to help everybody out here. And Mike's been tremendous to work with, and so have the landowners, and I appreciate you meeting with us today, supervisors. Thank you.
Just a question for Mike. So, because really, this whole project, that you so well laid out, a lot of thought put into it, and that's great. The drainage district-wise is just whatever amount of cleanout? I know you just mentioned you gotta make sure all legality, obviously, with everything. But the project is private, as far as it gets back to the drainage district, is just a cleanout at this point?
That's my understanding, yeah. It's just a cleanout, and the landowners will...
Will take care of this project. And just the biggest question is, the cost share, if everything meets what it's close to, the cost share would go back to the drainage district for whatever amount of cleanout?
Right. And then whatever is remaining would be divided among the landowners who are whatever are assessed to that spur.
But should only be...
And it should be, you know, a minor amount.
Minor. It should be very minor amount.
Right. To be clarified, that there is cost share for whatever amount to go back to the drainage district.
Sounds good.
So, I have one other, and hopefully, it isn't a dumb question. But you're going to the eighteen-inch, and this is gonna be your private tile?
Between Don and I.
Between you and Don. So, if anybody ever wanted to attach to that, I guess that's my question.
You'd have to pay.
You'd have to pay for...
Well, let me...
'Cause he's creating the watershed here.
So, we're gonna attach this map when we're done. And it's gonna clearly say in the mutual tile agreement that you only can tile within the parameters of the watershed. So, nobody be able to go beyond the watershed to the mutual tile agreement. That'll be... This'll be recorded that way. So, once Don Etler gets the acres figured out within the watershed, then that'll be the final acres. You won't be able to, "Oh, jeez, we cost shared, and we're gonna charge this person to pick up some additional money." We're not gonna allow that. We're gonna go into the watershed, figure out the acres that are gonna drain in here, and that's where it ends, right there.
But if we needed a twenty-four, after we get the eighteen buried, is too late to do the...
It's too late.
That's... Okay.
It's too late.
So, I just wanna make sure I'm not...
That's why we want an engineer to determine...
Make sure that's right.
And Tom understands that if, and so does Don, if they wanna upsize the tile, that will have to be their cost in the material.
Yeah, that's what it's half.
'Cause they only pay up to half.
Yep.
And so, they're very aware of that.
Well, I'm sick of think that we're doing it.
Very good. Looks like a good project.
When did you propose to start this project?
What's that? You're breaking up. I can't hear you.
No.
I honestly can't save right at this time, because I've got a lot of stuff going on in my business world right now.
You're spoken like a true tile lady expert.
You know, I've learned the hard way not to give people hidden promises, you know. I certainly would like to get this done this summer. Now, one of the things, too, is that if we do do crop damage, the cost sharing would pay for crop damage for, you know, the people that would be affected by the damages. So, that would be good, too. I like doing main tile in the summer. I think Rick Hopper will agree a hundred percent. When the conditions are favorable, to put mains in summertime's the best, 'cause the tile usually aren't running as much water and blah, blah, blah.
Absolutely.
But I would like to say that I would get it done, you know, this summer sometime. Otherwise, you're breaking up beyond that.
I mean, it does affect the drainage district part of it, and obviously, Tom and Don, so...
Right, right.
Well, I'd like to come up when you close the well. I'd just like to observe it once.
Sure.
Up today or yesterday to...
See how they're coming up there.
Seeing that one, and there's a lot of clay in that ground. Wow.
They're probably deep, aren't they? Not really.
Not so bad.
No. Ten, 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 twelve.
Boy, there's a lot of... We can make a lot of horseshoe pits out of the clay that they got there.
I mean, I hate to say, I've seen a lot of drainage wells in my life, but this one's a monument. You got... It's just, it's gorgeous. It's just perfect. You know, they just did an excellent job in constructing this well. I just, I don't know, Bruce, if I can have you come up. I don't know if I can take that out, 'cause it's a monument. But no, it... What's nice is, I was able to get some really good elevations of the two tile, so we're not skipping a tile that might be somewhere else there. So, we'll have to do a little bit of preliminary work there and make sure that the tile... 'Cause the tile that's out in the low ground that has the intake on it is not the tile that goes into the well, because Tom dumped a bunch of water in there. It did not go in the well. But there is a ten-inch coming in there that we're not certain where it goes, but that's at the bottom of the well. And that's the one that drains subsurface tile and maybe some laterals into it, too. So, that's it.
Do we need to make motion on that, or...
If you do, you're gonna have to go in drainage, because this was just discussion.
No, this is just discussion.
So, with the engineering firm to get all the legalities covered, where are you with that as far as...
Well, first of all, we're gonna get a cart in front of the horse. So, we got Don and Tom to agree this weekend to pay for half of the estimated cost that I've got here. So, we got that taken care of. And I've got Don Etler's fees in here. So, now, I'll get ahold of Don and say, "Okay, we're good to go, but you're gonna have to come up with a report and something that I can bring back to the board so they can approve it." And then, once we get to that point, then Mike has to approve it through whatever means that the engineer had, you know, come up with his plan, and then they can cut me loose.
Perfect.
Do we need to wait for an engineering report, or can we...
Put that on the agenda first.
Can we go to drainage and approve this so I can move forward? Which way do we need to go?
There, I think what they're looking for is just any opposition from us, and I don't see any.
I don't see that.
No, that sounds very good.
Okay.
Very good work.
And if anybody needs to call me for anything, please don't. But, no, but if you need anything, just give me a shout if you have any questions or anything like that. That'll be a great project for them, and Don Falterson understands, and I got this through to him, how many main tile that you get to put in a farm for seventy-five percent cost share. So, Huntermark's well actually was a great asset to Don. And like I said, Don needs prayers. That's the most important thing for him. And he's just run through some really tough times right now. So, anyway, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Very good, and I'll let you go.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Just one more off our list.
Yes, yes.
Well, regarding the drainage wells, we probably have a lot of natural wells out there, too. We get all these drainage wells there. What do we do about the natural ones? Leaving there?
There's not enough money in the state of Iowa.
There's no such damage as a well to...
I know, but that's a whole nother discussion. So, we're on this...
We're just...
We said that, yeah, there is no issue with the product. We have to go into drainage, but when we get the engineer's report.
What they didn't wanna do is, they didn't wanna go through all the expenses and get any report. They, "Oh, no way. Are we gonna let you do that?"
No way would we allow it, and then...
Right. So, they should be given, then we've proved. So, our major concern is the drainage district dredge ditch.
Yeah. And that looks to me like that should be a fine deal.
Looks pretty minimal at this point.
Alrighty, Paul. You got Paul Jacobson. You got contracts from Midwest Contracting. We have five minutes left.
What's that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, I have on one agenda item, approved contract and bond with Midwest Contracting LLC for project numbers LC-173304, LC-181020, and LC-280660. We have bonds in hand and properly executed and a contract properly executed for your approval. And we did meet the timetable to beat the court permitting. So, that's why we awarded on the day of the letting, and we got it turned in time to beat the requirement. So, we should be heard with the board.
Good deal.
And make a motion to approve?
Motion through.
Second by...
Second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so then I can sign. Is this the one I need to sign?
Oh, yeah. You'll need three of these, and there's a...
Everybody has to sign them?
No, no, no. Just the chairman, the three contracts, and probably five bonds. Ben has got paper clips on signature papers.
Alrighty, I'll be...
Yep, very good.
How's it still going today, Paul? They have lots of good stuff. I cleaned mine out last night. I'll do it again this morning.
It really wasn't too bad, I didn't think. I mean, I was up and down all night and...
Linda? Hi, are you ready to come talk this morning?
And really, the wind blew a lot of it clean. There are sheltered areas where we had drifting, but they were hit and miss. And I'm sure we run them, but there's not a lot. I mean, I didn't see anything that...
Negative shelter there. Sounds like what we had last week.
Yeah, no, no. It's a dry, cold this time instead of the wet slot, too.
Several people called and wanna know why we weren't cleaning. And I said, "Well, we were up cleaning. Well, why'd they cancel school?" Well, I said, "We don't have anything to do with school."
I don't know that either.
We were out around five.
Yeah, they went by my place around six, six thirty or somewhere.
Well, they would've been out at five, but.
Yeah.
But there was nothing.
To school.
That you couldn't drive to your wife.
Yeah.
Anyway, I haven't seen it yet, I haven't driven around, I talked to one operator this morning, I, and he asked me, he said, what's the deal, how come? And I said, I don't know, that was our foreman, so, and he told me he sanded courthouse at five after five without anybody calling us.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, we appreciate it.
I'd rather have a little extra sand when something broke in, here in the parking.
There was some snow on it, he said it is anyway.
That's fine. All right, Linda.
Good morning.
You have a approved wetland application.
Yep, this is the first for you.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Not that we shouldn't have been doing it, I guess, but, we, um, received the wetlands from, um, the NRCS, that people go in and apply for areas of their land that to be designated as a wetland, or open prairie, or whatever, so. And I guess we are supposed to bring it to the board for their approval, because there's a place here to sign it, so, that's what we're gonna be doing from now on.
What if they do, they drop the taxes on it?
Mm-hmm, completely exempt.
Coming down.
You've got, you go down there first, go down to the NRCS first.
Okay. And. Mine's in a federal way.
Um.
We need your property tax rate.
I don't know that that will work, work, so. I know.
We like your tax dollar rate.
Yeah.
This is not, this is a state, considered state wetland then, could you say federal?
Well, there's, I think there's.
I, I know you're not an expert on wetland.
No, and it's, um, there's all kinds of different wetland programs, and this is a program, um, that if you've got an area that you can't farm, and they designate it as, um, a wetland area, or at the NRCS, then they approve it down there, and then they send it up to our office, for us to take it off, um, the tax roll.
Take it off entirely?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And we have approximately twelve hundred and sixty-one point three acres in wetland.
County wide?
County wide.
Well, this isn't a precedent then, other than coming to the board, you've had other.
We've never done this before.
We've been doing it for years, we just, ever since I started here, we've been doing it, but we, it's never been brought to the board before, and I guess it's supposed to have been brought to the board for approval, mm-hmm. So, um, that's what I'm do, I, I just had gotten them and taken them off, so.
When we go to these things at national level, talk about payment in lieu of taxes, they usually talk about farms and forest lands, is there any way this would qualify for payment in lieu of taxes, federal funds?
I think you lost me.
Well.
Probably not.
Some of the state parks and federal forests and so forth, they don't get your property tax on it.
Right.
Until they're always wanting you to pay this, what do you call it?
Phil.
Funds, this is the same thing, only it's not forest, it looks to me like, how to qualify?
Well, um, I don't think there's any counties that, I think, in the code, there might be some provision to apply for some money from the state for this.
Even northeast Iowa will get some of that from their land, we don't have any.
But, I don't know of any county that does that, so, and that figure is kind of approximate, because when it comes to me, when these come to me, and I check them on my land use map, if they don't, if they've got thirty acres exempt, and I only come up with twenty-eight, then that's what they get.
Oh.
So.
You know by your maps?
Yep, I draw it out, and, um, if it only comes, if it's a little less or whatever, then that's what they get. And that all has to kinda do with our farmland program on the computer too, if I don't have, when those acres are drawn out on our land use, if those acres don't match, what I say, if they're, if the acres are twenty acres on the land use, and I say on our other program, they're twenty-five, then it gives me an error, saying it won't let me calculate it. So, um, I have to have those land use acres match what's in our, um, assessment program, so. Anyway, this is the list, and we had, um, a hundred and two acres canceled this year, so.
So, it can be taken back and forth?
It's every year, every year they've gotta go down and reapply for it.
These wetlands, some of them qualify for CRP acres, don't they?
If they're in CRP, they can't.
Oh, they can't?
Mm-mm.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering, cause I'm receiving funds off it.
Right.
How do you get stuff, how do you get farmland out of wetlands?
This is just an annual, this, I think you're thinking of something else.
Must be.
Yeah, uh, this is an annual sign up, they have to sign up every year for it.
So, it's optional?
Mm-hmm.
Can be wetland one year, next you're farming?
Well, they can take it out.
You know, if they tile it, and get a mid, you know, midweek or wetlands, then it's back on the tax rolls.
Yeah, so.
That's why we gotta do it every year.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there's, um, wetlands, there's, uh, let's see, exemption is allowed for river or stream, or river and stream banks, only if the land is located at least thirty-three feet from the ordinary high mark of the river, um, there's forest cover, or there's, um, several different designations in there.
So, you said this is the first time you brought it to the board, do you need a motion to, or what do we?
Says approved wetland application, I gotta have an approval of the application, or then we have to sign off.
Of these applications.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the wetland application, as presented by Linda.
I guess this is something we've been doing, so.
This is just a formality that wasn't in place before?
Yeah, well, I've been going, you know, we go to our district meetings, and everybody says, you don't do that, and, well, no, I haven't, and so, now we are.
Well, that's an example of all the others that's previous, okay?
Yep.
I second the motion. Okay, I have a first and a second, any more discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It used to be Terry.
Oh, okay.
Didn't it?
They asked yet?
Yeah, that, yeah, that took care of these.
Yeah.
And now it's a, I think it's a Teresa, it's shared.
It's another county that's doing it.
Yeah.
How are you?
If you want those back?
No, I got it, I got them.
Do I need to do anything on my side, do you know, with these, or?
No.
You don't.
You've done them in the past.
Yep.
No, we had to approve that, huh, so we don't provide, we're not the perfect.
Well, no. No. Yep.
All righty. Let's move back to our committee reports.
Tell where a lot of those are, just by the names of where they're located.
Yeah, over, over in the wetlands.
Up in, up in the others in that powerful area.
In there. I didn't have anything else to add, other than.
Okay.
I thought Peggy could get a job introducing governor, and leave her down there in Des Moines by her son, she took us out to eat one night, pretty nice. I've been, maybe you have some more things at that.
Um, going back to last week, uh, last Monday, at the LAC quick meeting, uh, in the morning, uh, board meeting, went to that, of course, uh, finalized assessors budget on, uh, Tuesday evening.
Wow.
And, of course, the day for capital, and the two days of ISAC in Des Moines, I concur with what everyone else said, all in all, I found it very interesting, and for the most part, educational, so I was glad to have the opportunity to go, and Peggy did do a good job, and I saw your picture on the NACO website.
Oh.
There you go, you're getting better and bigger publicity than you even thought, and I think that was, and I, I did enjoy, that was one of the things, the NACO president, very, very good.
Very nice, huh?
Yes, so, I mean, and you, and obviously for me just starting out, I enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity to get up to speed with a lot of the things going on between ISAC, NACO, and all of that, so.
NACO is a good organization.
Yes.
Well, you just pointed, it's NACO magazine, you've got Brian's picture here, you've got Barn's picture here, I think it's Melvin Howard, we don't see Peggy anywhere.
No, I didn't get.
But, like I said, as far as their, uh, weekend review with photos, Peggy got a little thing on that, so.
A little bit of fret.
Yes, so, anyway, uh, very, very good, and that's what I did last week.
Okay, I had the LAC Monday morning, seven-thirty, the county conference, six o'clock on Tuesday, I, Tuesday, I think at noon, I went out and looked at the process on progress on thirty-three out here northeast of town, they weren't doing anything at that time, cause it was so muddy, but now that it's froze up, I'm sure they're back at it.
Yeah, they're moving right along.
They getting more bike out there when it's frozen? I hope so.
Yeah, it's out across the fence to the east.
So, it's kind of a nice blessing for them to get this cold weather, and then I was down in Des Moines for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, along with the gentleman, and, uh, I thought that one of the matrix was interesting, and things you can do to, uh, change a little bit on the scoring, you can, uh, pass for certain areas to be scored, so.
Little eye opening.
We had angry people there, wanted to throw it out, and. Yeah.
I kinda felt sorry for him, cause I, and I think he was gonna throw it to the wolves about, you know, he's the one that gets to come in and get chewed on for, for some of the things that he really has no ability to change.
No, it wouldn't waste when he comes to the table. He didn't agree with it, but his, he has a law of certain regulations, and then the EPA tells him what to do, probably.
Probably a lot.
Somebody asked, we get the EPA and, and, uh, the hour there, it's, I did that. Keep the EPA out of my county. But, anyway. That's right, okay, other items of discussion?
Um, I gave you all a copy of the ordinance on dogs, abandoned or at large dogs, we talked about, um, having a dog catcher, um, for animal control officers. And didn't wanna make you aware that if you wanted to, um, change that, cause you talked about thirty dollars.
Mm-hmm, I see, down the bottom, it's twenty-five.
Then we'll need to get our ordinance changed, um, I'm gonna let you review this for a week, let me know if there are any other changes you would like to see, as long as we're doing that, we might as well update the rest of it, um, and if so, then we'll put it on the agenda for next week, and for the week after.
I think I'll do that, do you?
Um, along with that, I put together a rough draft of what a notice to the paper would be like, oh, a copy for you guys to look at, see if that wording looks okay with you, um, if I need to put anything more in it, or take anything out of it. And there's a few extras there, I can make more copies too, if we need.
Push me on, keep coming to the waterfront.
Do you wanna grab that for me, and you can give it to me, and I'll give it to Robert, and then we can, I'll make a copy today.
The only, the only thing I wonder if we shouldn't put on here, um, if there's any questions, we should probably have the sheriff's number on there too, Dean.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe he. Let's put on there, uh, Dean Kruger has been currently doing this, so if there's any questions.
I would just.
Refer them to him.
I don't think he knew that he was doing it, but I'd just say, yeah, cause he agreed that if there's any questions, by all means, him and a one, what's the gentleman's name in, uh, city?
Travis.
But, Dean, yeah, and.
He was fine with you. Feel the questions more so than you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, okay, but Dean Kruger, county sheriff, can be contacted if, if you have any questions.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
And then I'll put the phone number down there.
Well, my question is, are they gonna take these animals, if they pick up two dogs, are they taking them somewhere, are they gonna put them out here at the sewer plant for a day or two?
I think if they have a collar or a tag, they will contact the person, you know, and if they don't, they'll probably go to the vet, and then from the vet, they'll go out to Fort Pauzine.
Or either.
Or Fort Dodge.
Or either adoption, re-adoption?
And typically what she does out there, she puts them on Facebook, and usually somebody, you know.
Well, I guess my question is, what if we get, and, you know, you get a dog out there that's been there for, I know what it costs if we leave ours for four or five days, and, I mean, are we gonna, the, the people that take these, are they gonna re, you know what I'm saying, are we gonna get hooked with a two hundred dollar bill for pet, uh, Fort Pauzine, or?
Well, I think, I think she has them for three days, and then they go from there to Fort Dodge.
That's what I wonder.
They may pay forty bucks for Fort Dodge for it.
Well, read through the ordinance.
Says violation provision shall be punished on a fine, I see, one hundred dollars. Who enforces that order? If you're running.
The sheriff would, we'd have to.
Okay. That's where we get problems, people just let them go, not the pets.
Right, so, to speak to your question, Bruce, if it's, you know, nobody can be tracked down, they're probably gonna cost us something, I mean, there's no way to get it back to enforce fine penalty payment, if you don't.
Well, that's the problem, yeah.
Do someone, and Dean would, well, I'm not speaking to him.
Well, part of the thought process the city's doing with putting a new tag on, that.
Right.
They can get my dog.
Right.
Of course, they all know him, so.
And, and it's not, and then even though, even though your dog is problematic, it's not your dog, or the, the person's dog that gets chased, that, that they can deal with those people, and they may have to pay a fine, or they may have to do whatever, but it's a wonder, get dumped out in the middle of nowhere.
Not to mention Travis said there's only ninety animals registered by the deadline, so.
Must not be a fit friendly town.
And I think we should re, you know, look through this ordinance and visit about it next week, just to, maybe we will tweak it a little bit, put it on books.
Yeah, one other thing I was approached by, the radio station.
He wants to be it?
No.
No.
No. Uh, they would be more than willing to put some of our ads on their radio.
Cool.
For, um, twice a day, so that's something we could consider.
I don't deal with sales, Bruce.
So, I think for future things, we should, uh, consider that, cause it's a local business, and it reaches out to our county.
Yep.
Sure.
So, make that a reminder in your head, that if we were putting something out there, we could use them also to get it out to the.
Something we should consider, having them broadcast, or?
Depending on their fee. Ah, he discussed that.
Call my pig here, Carl, actually below, for being honest. He's on a cookie contract?
Is it something you think we should put out there? Some things probably be important.
I don't know, we, we use them once in a while.
Yeah.
Openings in the industry's.
Yeah.
And public terrorists, there isn't, and we use them both, road closures, we use them.
I often think it's like fifteen dollars, something like that.
I'll go with your rate.
There you go.
Well, um.
I, I think it would be doable.
Yes, fifty, um, why don't we contact them?
For.
And, uh, see what they charge, and, uh.
They've been running it down, technically.
We're inappropriate, cause I think we're, no, there's this one already, no, this one hasn't been running in the past, this is.
No, I can start it this week with a change.
Did you ever do that before? Put the ad in the paper then, for the position?
Not yet, I want to get your opinion.
Okay, okay.
Um, deadline's three o'clock afternoon, so I think that's what I.
Okay, yes, why don't we contact, we should pull out of the radio station.
Okay.
Okay, uh, one other thing, Rick Hopper wanted to discuss something with us before we.
Aye.
And if, if there isn't anything else.
Well, I'll wait till Rick talks, I got a couple things for future discussion.
I just was gonna tell you, and I mentioned it, that I drove out to, uh, up north of Virgil Williams, and I took, I don't know, five or six pictures of the, and it looks like they finally got, it must've took a bunch of tile in there, and then took their.
Cleaned the road up.
Well, they leveled their path, because, I mean, it was.
It was nasty when I was out there.
It was so rough, I thought I was gonna get stuck with my pickup, but.
Which day, Bruce?
I went out Saturday morning, but it looked like someone had lighted.
They delivered pipe Thursday then?
Yeah, but they got, I only got a couple of pictures here that show, they got pipe cleared across over to, uh, the east fence line, so they got several days.
We met direct correspondence with the contractors and the engineers, saying, you know, hey, the road's the road, you guys staring it up, you're responsible for it.
And that's something we discussed down there with the matrix, was, uh, they, they thought you can put in ordinances in your county that, when they're gonna do a building project, haul, you know, whatever they need to talk to, secondary roads.
Was it Delaware?
And they photograph the road before they do it.
They carry that they pay for, with a lot of counties.
Was it Delaware?
And then build, I am.
And then build the, the, either the.
Oh, that would go very well in the fall.
Well, you know, like Delaware said, they, I think it was Delaware, wasn't it?
Yeah, that old guy said they do it already.
They said they do it just for the simple fact, you know, it's, the manure guys are gonna haul, and the times when it's wet.
You know, and again, we had more problems probably ten years ago than we have lately, because most of the manure haulers around here are local, where we have problems when it's seven different people involved, and the manure haulers from Timbuktu all. Where we have problems when it's seven different people involved and the manure haulers from Timbuktu also. Nobody cares, you don't even know who to talk to. That's where we have trouble.
Yeah, they just keep passing the bus.
The locals will, will, when they see they start tearing up, they'll move to different locations.
I don't think they have a handle for the feed truck, but they're pretty firm on the manure haulers.
Well, manure haulers and the contractor, I mean, the contractors will build any time of the year, no matter what, it doesn't matter. If they have to pull the, it'd be much like EC Source, if they have to pull with a cat down the road to get concrete in there, they'll do it.
Yeah.
That leaves the road in nice shape.
Yeah. Okay, Rick, you got some.
Just a quick, just a quick update on some things. Um, I was down last week, the DD six tile job over by Thor, met with the appraisers. Uh, they asked me to make an adjustment on the easement prices, I've done that. They'll be in this week and sign that, I dropped it with Trish this morning, uh, so I'll probably have her get that on the agenda next week. It'll just be reviewing it and setting a hearing date, but it'll be an agenda item. Uh, related to that project, I checked this weekend when I was in the office, we've got, on that DD six, we've got sixteen plan holders. Scary almost, a lot of interest, I mean, a big time interest in that thing, so. And we know that Denver's been very interested, Nels Peterson out of Badgers interested, um, yeah, and they're. I'm, I'm hoping somebody like that gets it, you know, somebody with some local interest, um, and concern. So, um, we're gonna be opening bids on that Monday, next Monday, week from today, so. Um, DD three.
I have one question.
Yeah.
And the bids are gonna be all concrete?
Yes, because of the depth mostly on that one.
Um, next Monday, the thirteenth?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Okay. Yep, got it.
Okay. And we're also, we're having a hearing on the DD three cleanout, uh, the one, um, south of Thor. We have a hearing on the report and we're having the bid letting also, and there's ten plan holders on that ditch cleanout, so.
Wow.
Yeah, so we'll see.
Next, next week?
That's next Monday too.
Yep.
So, again, a lot of interest.
A hundred people.
Yeah, yeah, the timing's good yet for this, so that's gonna all work out fine. The, yeah, just as a side note, I'm, I'm glad that well is working out like it is because Don Foltensen was really concerned about him cutting across there, so.
Yeah.
They've got, they've.
And I think some of the smaller ones, it's a great way to do them privately.
Yeah, yeah.
Saves everybody money.
Well, they've come together with the plan and nobody has to argue about it.
That's right. Oh, yeah, it's really good that way. And I, and I know one that'll, there may, may come up is that DD two lateral M one that we've been addressing.
I know, because they've been looking into doing it privately.
Yep, yep, and they're meeting about that now. It's.
The one that we went out and looked at out, I guess you weren't with me that day, but.
Which one?
The egg wells out here west.
But I did look at the same ones you did, so which one is the DD two one?
That's lateral M, that's the one you went and looked with Louie.
Yeah, well, we looked at so much stuff, Rick.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, Louis.
Which one is it?
We looked at everything.
And I, I just, for my own interest, I tried to locate where those wells were as far as the, the district boundary. And I believe three of the four are already in DD two.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I know the one of Louise Piper's, one of hers is.
Yeah.
So, any report you do would catch that, so.
I don't know where lateral M is.
So there'll be an annexation, but.
Familiar.
I think the annexation would probably just include one well, and then you have all four of them in the district, so. Yeah, Mike's meeting with them back there now just to see if something like that would work out.
Got the process going.
Exactly, so, um, DD one twenty-five reclass is ready to meet with the commissioners. I hope to, if it's not this week, next week, get together with them, um, get the ball rolling on the hearing on that one too, so, just, yeah.
I went down and talked to that DNR guy after his presentation the other day and asked him about those, that cluster over there by Gilmore. That, the cost, you know, that you said was gonna be huge cost.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I asked him if he could give us a name of somebody in Des Moines that we can talk to, at least to get both sides of the.
Or a wetlands guy.
So he gave me a name that we can call and at least get someone to, you know, throw the cookie at and say.
Yeah.
Um, the cost of these things is gonna be huge, um, do you have any options? Because we don't know how long you're gonna continue to pay the seventy-five percent.
Right.
And he suggested doing that just for the simple fact that we get our foot in the door and say, they're looking at it.
So then he can go when it comes for funding time, hey, I got these seven wells I need to close, I need money for them.
Mm-hmm, that's great.
Or wetlands or whatever.
So I guess my question is, how do we wanna proceed with this Steve Hoppies? Do we, do we do a conference call sometime? Do we, do you call him or do?
Neither, does he travel at all?
That's what I don't know.
Yeah.
He just gave me the name and said. He just said if he called us and asked for him at the switchboard and then explained it the way I explained it to him that.
Sure.
That we're looking to try to figure out what's the best avenue, whether it's wetland mitigation. I said, well, we don't know if by changing it into a wetland, if we'd lose Highway Three, which I'm sure would probably upset the state if they have to.
Yeah.
Run their highway a little higher.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're just trying to figure out our best avenue and he said, that's why he would.
That's the guy.
Recommend this gentleman. My second thing is, is up there, you're the engineer right up here, no, that's INF.
No, that's INF.
All right, well, I got a picture I wanna show you. So you want this? I'm turning it, it's on camera.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Because if I lose that, I don't want him to, the guy actually says, he looked at me, he looked at my name.
Why don't you give it to me for a second, I'll write it down.
Excellent, yeah.
And the official, let me pick it up.
Uh, Gene goes, I think I know, we went to school at the same time, he was at Iowa State when I was down there, so. He said, we'll work harder for the cyclones. He didn't say that.
Very good, yeah, so, yeah, just, I just wanted to do a few things like this.
Perfect.
This report dropped off, I've got a couple of things for Pella Hilda County to take care of, so it was just a good day to take care of all those things.
Was the snow all the way up that way?
Oh, my, yeah.
Is it worse up that way?
I think it is, yeah, I didn't think I was gonna get out of our development. I went into town yesterday and got the pickup because there's no way I would've got out with the car.
Or the radio reported, we got seven inches, I don't know if we got seven.
We got seven or eight and it blew pretty hard, yeah, so.
Got one more question for you. Spoke with Don Bash, uh, this last week, and I spoke with Vern Wacter, I think Vern's been in contact with you.
Yep, about twice a week.
I think what we need to do is have a joint tile conference with Kasuth again and, um, just put it out there and have an official meeting where our minutes are. They need to do something up there, they need to do a petition for an improvement of some sort.
Yeah.
Put it in their hands, put it in their hands, because you didn't find nothing, look, looking through the history.
There's, water follows a general path through that ground.
General.
But it's not defined and it changes some from year to year occasionally.
Yeah.
So, it went, and we have the records that it was never designed, never improved as a waterway, just a tile. And we have the whole profile of it from plans we've copied before, so. Yeah, I can just have all of that available as far as, um, discussion, you know, I can be part of it.
I was just gonna ask, along those same lines, if you visited with the Kasuth County Board of Supervisors?
No, I keep, I've been trying to meet with them on a different project and it's either them or them or me has something come up. I'm meeting with them, look, I think it's two weeks from tomorrow. I have to look at my schedule.
Not to put any more undue stress on Rick, but it, it better if, you know, because you've got some ideas and, and obviously what you've said, you've kept us up to speed real well on that. If he visited with them to whatever degree before we had any joint dealings with them, correct? And everybody does that. Just, just the fact that, you know, get that in their mind, because you.
Yeah.
You've got some things that obviously that can be not easily on the technical side, um, put into a waterway and recorded in part of the drainage district.
Right.
Uh, technically, that's pretty simple.
Right, right.
Personnel, personally, personality wise, it isn't gonna be very simple.
No, 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 there's, there's enough.
So I just wanted if, if Rick, and I'm not trying to put any more on Rick and their company.
Oh, I don't have a.
But if you're gonna visit with them, would it be best if, if he had that little bit, whatever conversation?
Little conversation.
Whatever, first, did we have any kind of a joint, anything?
I'll check that date.
And just, just something that you're gonna do.
I, yeah, I plan to do it anyway, so it's just a matter of your timing as far as joint.
And if, if he, if it, well, you might wanna visit with them first, or do you want us to do it on that day? I mean, we have to, we'd have to slip in here for on a Tuesday.
I had a suspicion that, you know, Rick, for lack of a better way of saying it, visits with them gets them up to speed on kinda what is, what he's done.
Right, and so, what's happened.
We don't necessarily have to talk to him the same day that he does, but I would think it would be better that he has the conversation.
I like that idea.
Before we do.
All right.
And then we can follow up.
We'll set it up then for like three weeks from now.
Yeah, or you just let us know when you talk to him, you don't have to come and just.
And I've got it on the agenda, I'm pretty sure, is the twenty-eighth the Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's what it is, I got my calendar out there, I'll check it.
And yes, yeah, you don't have to come, we, you've done really good, we, we know, I mean, we're up to speed.
Yeah, and, and I'll keep burning, he'll call me.
He'll call me, he'll call Rick, he'll call us all?
Yeah.
One other question, what are you, what are you, how comfortable are you in, on this pipe? You know, they put a born date on them?
Mm-hmm.
So how long do those pipes need to cure? Curious.
It depends on how they cure them, if it's in.
Steam or?
Yeah, and if it's heated, um.
Well, I'm just.
I sure like to see at least a week.
Seven days are gonna be at ninety percent.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just plain old concrete, I don't know, probably.
Right, it's similar, it's a similar situation, a week.
I guess I'm, I took a couple of pictures up there and one of the pictures here, one of the pipe had three six and this is the eleventh. So that means some of them pipe are pretty green. And you go putting them twenty some feet under the ground and stuffing twenty foot of dirt on them, that.
But if, if the type of concrete cures faster, it increases full strength early.
I know, but.
Percentage of strength fast.
Valuable.
I mean, they got roads that they pour and they drive on them four hours later.
Oh, yeah, you can design it for that.
Well, I know they got their, got steel in them and everything, but.
That's a good question to ask.
I'll show you this picture.
Good question to ask.
I just thought I'd ask an engineer.
Yeah, well, at least a week, um, I don't know, what, how?
Pre-cases is pretty quick.
Yeah, it is quick.
The dry stuff here in this plant is quick because there's not water, it's a dry plant.
They plant it, they, they make it so dry and where you lose strength with concrete is adding water. Same with the road or driveway or whatever.
The adding water thing is.
Oh, yeah, cure too, you gotta cure it.
The adding water thing is the length of curing time too increases.
Yes, 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 yep.
Valuable concern though, yeah, you know, that's something that's not really up to what its specs are and then bury it twenty feet in the ground.
Yeah, yeah, not good.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for the update.
Betcha. I'm gonna take one of these.
Um, do you wanna talk about five-year plan?
When can we do it, is what I'd like to know.
When Dave is supposed to be back.
Where Dave's next, next week.
Dave will be back next week.
When, he emailed me, I see it this morning.
But I'm.
I mean, I can, we can do it, uh, the intro to the five-year plan and I can bring him up to speed on his own whenever and then.
I don't really wanna have to have you make fourteen different presentations.
The other, other, the only thing, the clock is ticking.
Yeah.
I usually wait till after this part of it because of last week's ice act and your local.
But you got going to thirty, twenty-third on Thursday, is that too late? I am wide open that day, I don't know about the rest of you.
Could be in Kansas City.
Oh, what's in Kansas?
You mean Milwaukee?
I'm gonna be, I got Central Juvenile Detention at nine in the morning, no, excuse me, uh, CFR at six at night.
I thought maybe Thursday morning, twenty-third would work good, but if you're gonna be in Kansas City.
No, I'm not. I would, I would like to be there, but I don't think it will happen.
I don't know.
Next Monday, after the meet, how big a gym do you got next month?
It's worse next week, it's worse next week than this week.
We got mud drainage.
Oh, okay.
Twenty, we, we got three different hearings and bid letting.
Good, uh.
Tuesday, I, I.
Are you pretty flexible next week, Paul?
I am flexible next week.
Uh, can we bring this up? Can we bring this up at next week's meeting when Dave will be here and then hope to schedule in a time yet by the end of next week?
What's our deadline that you have to have it?
The fifteenth of April.
Fifteenth of April, and we wanna have that all put together before then, so.
Is that's fair to check our schedules at next week's meeting and then try to.
Unless, if you're ruling out Monday and Tuesday, uh, Mr. Underberry, if we're gonna do Monday and Tuesday, I would email him wherever he's at to see if he's available so we can agendize it and do it Monday or Tuesday. Otherwise, we're automatically till Wednesday or Tuesday afternoon at least anyway.
I'm gonna be out of town for CSS meeting all day on Wednesday and I got a doctor's appointment in April Friday, on Tuesday. Thursday's first day, I can meet, let you do it Monday afternoon.
Therefore, maybe this week, we don't have a full board and do it one, I, anyway, whatever you guys wanna do, I, I, uh, next Monday is meetings for me in the morning.
We'll be tired after we get to that.
No, no, I'm.
He's my only.
Have something on the board, I mean, if you can't do it, it's Monday morning, it's always out.
Yeah, I think Thursday would be good if we can, you know, get together, huddle out Dave, but we.
Thursday of the following week?
Twenty-third, as far as I can see right now.
Mine's just a.
Monday afternoon.
Mine's just a Monday night meeting.
What do you guys feel? What would you rather do?
Bite the bullet and do it the whole day.
On Monday?
And that's the way I'd rather go.
That's the way I'd rather do it, because my day's half shot anyway, back after lunch.
So you wanna send.
Maybe we can, I don't know how long this is gonna, you know, I'm just guessing that.
Oh, the, the rainy new stuff, it runs at noon. Well, you know, we're just, we're.
We're not really.
They're doing the letting.
Two hearings.
Lettings and a bid letting, you open them up and.
What time's the letting?
Nine thirty and nine forty-five.
I mean, a work session is a work session, if it's after the meeting.
Yeah, it just has to be agendized, the time isn't so crucial.
Can you, uh, get through this up in a strong hour, Paul?
I can do it in twenty minutes or ten minutes.
But I mean, you said one to two in your email, so.
That's right.
Just cut it down to half, an hour?
No, I, I have a lot of food for thought in this baby.
But I mean, an hour?
Well, the other side is, is how many questions you get back, so.
No, that's the point. And, and I hope we got questions back, because there's a lot of loaded questions in, uh, trying to figure out prioritizing where you're gonna spend your money.
I would email Dave, see what he thinks of the Monday.
Monday right after our meeting, whether.
I guess we hope for the best.
Whether it's ten, eleven, or twelve, whatever.
Meeting fairly short and sweet and get through it fairly quick, maybe we'll be done by noon.
We can order a pizza in and just eat lunch and do it.
I guess I agree with Rick, then you're shooting one day instead of trying to shoot half another day that week.
Yeah.
Because I, everybody's got stuff going on next week, I got a meeting next week. Carl's got stuff, everybody's got stuff, and if we don't wanna do it this week.
But let's, let's set it up for next Monday.
Fair enough.
We don't like getting out there till noon anyway.
Well, you know, if we get out of here by noon, we'll consider it a success.
Yeah.
You don't wanna, yeah, haircut at eleven thirty, do you?
You can, we can do it.
I can change that very easily, no problem.
Don't, don't go away.
I got scissors in here, I can cut while we're, while we're talking.
I just pulled your leg.
I'm gonna hear Bruce's serious, I'll help that even have a haircut.
That's what we amend the budget to, right?
Budget amendment here, actually.
Should work. Say anything else out there for discussion, get anything for us, Peggy?
Maybe Peggy can.
No, but Eric.
I do.
Oh, Eric got something.
Okay, this was brought up, I believe actually with our brush control guy, uh, dredge ditch brush control, that is. Beaver dams.
Yeah.
Okay, well, uh, so that's something that I, just as pure coincidence, but good timing, had a good conversation with, uh, one of the guys that is a premier beaver trapper. Obviously, you need to get rid of the beavers and get rid of the dam and any drainage dredge ditch.
Yeah, it doesn't do any good to tear out the dam.
Well, you have to get rid of the beavers and I admit it, just, I don't wanna assume anything, but that, that dynamiting the dams is probably out in this day and age.
Yeah, they do use long reach and grab them out.
I, I know, but I like the dynamiting idea, but I know, we're not gonna go there, so. Do we have, do we know where the beaver dams are in the, you know, it would be virtually any dredge ditch or drainage district ditch. The trapping season only goes till the middle of April, we need to contact these gentlemen to set up, uh, them to allow them, you know, access, they'll, they'll, they're, they're very good at this. They do, they love to trap beavers, they do a really good job, they know most of the landowners, it's not a big deal. But we need to authorize that we will do that, how much we pay per beaver removed and they need it done between now and the middle of April when the trapping season closes. So we don't need to try to go to any extracurricular permitting in that with the DNR and all that fun stuff, so.
We currently have, some farmers do report them into us and then it's home, Trish arranges it. She has trappers who it chooses, I don't know if they die or, or what, but.
They.
I don't, I don't know that we've ever taken on a project where we've gone out and identified. Usually it's when the farmer comes in and says, I've got something.
I know, for this, for this, for this, well.
But they didn't have to another permission to be on.
They.
Federal periphery and you can do it all year anyway.
Yeah, and I'm not a professional beaver trapper, but it's better for them, that the timing is good to trap the beavers and to trap out the whole group of the indoor family of them now versus even getting a permit, trying to do it later. You get, they, they explained to me, this time of the year, you can catch the entire family. You can just, you're done with them. And that's, of course, what you wanna do, so, um, beams, these guys, that's what they do and they like to do. They're pretty aware of, you know, where the beaver dams are. I'm aware of one specifically that I got information back that's, I could tell you, but I might, you know, look in the book. One of the, one of the dredge ditches and probably a couple more, so we do need to identify them. They did this last year and there is some humongous miscommunication somehow. They didn't get anything.
Well, the problem was they weren't in the drainage district.
Well, and I explained that to them. I said, I will make sure, because obviously, A, it's drainage district issue, we wanna get rid of the beavers, we wanna get rid of the dam. But I said, don't expect that you get a whatever dollar bounty per beaver because you were in the river or in a lot of creek or something that's, and they hadn't completely understood that. And, and they'd been fine, but the problem is, it wasn't specified enough, specific enough, that they got paid anything for the ones they did trap out of the drainage districts. So I said, that's why I'm bringing this up and it's something that needs to be addressed here pretty quick. We don't need to make a big rigmarole, I mean, identify them. They're familiar because unfortunately, beavers tend to keep building back in the same area, you know, the landowners and that, of course, no one wants a beaver dam. Very little if any opposition, we're not gonna be dealing with PDA here, so just something we need to address, but we need to address it very quickly and, and get it, get it squared away and get the grit of the beavers and then we'll get the, rid of the dams after that.
I think as a trustee, you can go in there and sign a work order for that. I'll have to ask Trish, but I think you can.
Well, would it be fair that whomever, because you wanna identify any, any existing dams in any drainage districts? Get those identified because they'd just love to get, you know, get as, to as many, if not all of them as.
Well, I don't, I, I mean, I'm just gonna go by from what I remember of the deal last year. The only thing I would like to see is if, if we have one located, that some, somebody puts eyes on it, that we know that the dam is there.
Oh, I have no, I have no problem going out.
No, I don't either and that's the point, somebody should go out there, look at it and say, yep, we got a dam. We can trap because if we're over by the edge of the river and the ditch comes, was it trapped inside and filled in? I mean, I don't.
I know.
If you're paying a thousand dollars.
But I, I made, I said, I, you know, from what I know of your program, I said, yeah, you can't go trap in the Des Moines River and get bounties for beavers. I mean, that's not, that's not the way it is, so, yeah, I agree with Bruce, you just identify it, verify it and let these guys go and, uh, you know, you have to, you know the people you're dealing with, they're, they're reputable as far as, you know, that is concerned. And if they know what they're up against, they're, they're more than happy to, to do it. And, you know, they understand, like you said, you can't just trap beavers all over the state and bring them back to Hummel County and get money for them. That's not the way it works. So, but the thing of it is, it is time sensitive. We wanna get rid of the beavers and then obviously we wanna get the later, not too long down the road, clean the dam out.
Yeah. Do we have to limit ourselves to one trapper or is that open?
See, you know.
I think you have to identify the, the guy who's gonna do it because he has to go out and talk to landowners and all that.
There's about a, what this amounts to, is about a group of three guys that, that really enjoy this and are very good at it. And there means that they've done this, they are familiar with landowners, they do understand the permission. And I think per my conversation with the one guy over the weekend, he understands how that works as far as, yes, we're quote unquote hiring you or giving you a bounty and I believe, I won't misspeak, but as a fifty-dollar beaver bounty to remove the boogers.
Yeah, that sounds familiar, I'd have to double check.
And they under, double check that, but I believe that was, and if they're taken out of, you know, where they're supposed to be taken out of.
District, whatever.
That's very minimal because obviously that's like any other drainage district project that goes back to the district, so it's not a humongous expense, but it's kind of a technicality and we wanna follow through on it.
We could get, if we could get, get them brought in on Monday, we can send them with Bob back to Webster County and he could release trap and release them down Webster County somewhere.
Well, um, it would probably be, as far as the trustees of drainage districts incumbent upon us to, um, locate and mark wherever beaver dams are right now, but actually, in all fairness, these trapping fellows probably know that more than anybody. Because, you know, if, they know the landowners, you know, they're all from Hummel County and they do know. So, I don't, I just wanna precipitously say that it is time sensitive and it isn't so much that we can't get an extension and they can trap into May, they don't want to. They wanna, they wanna do it and they do a good job and they, you know, you, you gotta take advantage. We're probably in a unique situation in Hummel County.
Beaver pelts are still good this time of year.
They are, but they're not worth very much.
No.
So, and how many people are thrilled about trapping anything?
They just do it for fun.
They do, but if you give them a bounty, they're thrilled.
Alright, talking beaver trapping.
Beavers.
Typically, we do, we issue a work order to trap beavers.
So then since there's a beaver dam.
The farmer or whoever, or a supervisor has noticed them, he can sign the work order.
And then we appoint one.
Went to trap them.
And you go out and help?
And then you, and then you go out and you collect the beavers personally?
Well, that's something we just discussed, so, yeah, you get paid extra for it though. Someone's gotta keep an eye on them, Trish.
Beavers are tricky.
Yeah, yeah, um, so Eric, he can sign the work order, he could appoint someone to do it. Should've taken care of, I would like a rough estimate as to how many beavers they think are in this colony.
Well, you know, that's.
Because all of a sudden, here we come up with twenty-five beavers.
The, you know, and there again, you have to realize the people you're dealing with.
And it has to be within the drainage districts.
Well, that's, and they, that's one thing they got educated on by me.
Yeah, and I know, and one of those dams is like two hundred yards from the edge of the district, which makes it hard, but even if the beavers are building a dam there, they're traveling back and forth. You still gotta get.
How about this? Because, you know, these guys are a great resource, not only will they do it, but they probably know where they are. If I just bring that question to them, do you know where all the beaver dams are? And you know they have to be in a drainage district. If you're questionable, you tell me where it is and we'll tell you it's in a drainage district. And then get it lined up to.
If it's in a dredge ditch, it's more than likely.
They run it, but I, I got a question for you. Our natural, what we call them around here, cricks, some of those in the drainage district?
No.
Nope.
It almost has, it has to be a dredge ditch.
Has to be a dredge ditch.
Okay. So a natural crick.
We had last year was, wasn't it?
That was, that was the problem.
That, I, I, I understood, like I said, and, and that was, so we had a really good conversation, so I see where your problem lies here, but, uh, I have no problem.
Do we have a current policy per head?
Per tail?
Yeah, and I don't think this is a big deal and I don't know, I know there's one for darn sure and I verified that already and I don't know if there's two, three or four. Maybe there's only one that's in a drainage district, yeah, right as we speak.
We live in the north, will they, tell somebody it's in their colony?
What's that?
Typically, there's not a lot of beavers in a colony.
Well, you don't have.
Not until they get their young.
If they are, they're a huge dam.
Colony, uh, ten to twelve is not, and that's not a humongous, you know, deal. Ten to twelve, because you need to get rid of all.
Yeah, you do.
Like I said, so, and they, they kinda have an idea, but you don't, you never know because, you know, beavers don't line up to take full call and get counted.
No, they don't.
So, but this is something, and I said, you know, they said, we know we're not gonna get rid of doing this, but you know, if we go in and it's a, it's a service that to get their fifty-dollar bounty, whether it's five, ten or fifteen, you know, that's, that's a heck of a service for the county.
Sounds like a job for the animal control officer.
No, no, then we won't get any.
No, we won't get any advocates.
And then they do it the correct way, so is, is it okay if I follow up a little bit on the matter? I think the biggest thing for, for the, uh, trustees as we are, is to make, you know, locate the dams that are in drainage districts. And then get those guys squared away and they have to get a work order before they start.
Someone asks from you, you can go in and sign a work order, you can identify who's gonna trap them, where they're trapping them.
Or the landowner that.
I'm gonna put a little bit of this on them and they agreed to it, that said, you know, identify the dam, the landowners are obviously probably already aware, but you just double check. They have good relationships with the landowners so that everybody knows.
You can bring creatures to tail then, right?
Yeah, photos would be awesome.
Oh, there's no, she showed me photos. He says, here's ten beavers we trapped in one location. So, this should not be a big deal, other than like I said, it is time sensitive, so that's why I brought it up today. I'll follow up on this and, uh, obviously report back next week where it's, where it's at.
Yeah, get, get the process moving.
If that's okay?
Yep.
Okay.
The Eber Beaver Report.
Eber Beaver, well, it's just that I understand this a little bit and they did a good job of explaining it. I'll, I'll do what I gotta do here yet this week and I should have a little more.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, got one other thing.
Okay.
Concern on whatever you wanna call it, nuisance for sure, unauthorized junkyard, Randy Bundy's on Iowa one sixty-nine.
I've been.
They're starting to become, they're starting to become more concerned again. I know this, I can't tell how many years ago it was, but I just wanna say that, so, approach specifically from a, you know, local resident and he's not the only one, you know, and it's becoming a concern again.
Didn't we say something to John about?
He sends a letter and they clean up for a week or two and then get bad again.
There's no cleaning up.
There's, there has.
I understand his wife, a lot of places have these fences around them that keep them on their property so you don't have to see it when you drive by, why he don't go fence, I don't know.
I don't wanna go into great discussion, the one concerned citizen wasn't so sure that some of it wasn't spilling into the states right of way of the road. And, you know, all valid points, uh, it's, it's a mess.
It's been a mess, but let's put it on the agenda to have John come down and talk to us next week while we can do it.
There you go.
Good idea.
And maybe Dean?
And Dean.
Revisit, revisit something you've revisited numerous times.
Yeah, but that's, there again, Bruce, if.
I know, but I'm just saying, he, I know he's been contacted about it because I asked him about it last year.
Well.
So, I appreciate you bringing it up.
It's, yeah, let's just put on the agenda and get those guys in here and next week, get a hold, you got a couple of minutes with them and that's what I mentioned the concerned citizen, I said, you know, don't expect immediate action, I said, I'll bring it up and so we brought it up and we'll see, we'll move forward with it.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Second.
In favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned at ten.